So I would like to call to order the City of Emeryville Planning Commission meeting of August twenty six, twenty twenty one. Director Bryant, could you call a role please?
Commissioner Chafe.
Here.
Commissioner Dram.
There.
Commissioner Gitzoni.
Here.
Commissioner Simons.
Here.
Commissioner Zepco.
Here.
Vice Chair Mendez.
Here.
And Chair Keller.
Here.
All seven commissioners are present.
Thank you so much. So now we can have in the swearing in of the new commissioners. The city clerk would please proceed.
Okay, Commissioner Gitzoni, Commissioner Dram, if you would, I'm going to ask you to state your name. You'll you'll do the the oaths simultaneously and you can each state your own names. And then you'll have the option to either swear or affirm at the beginning of the oath. So if you'd like to raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
Hi, Al Dram.
Oh, Commissioner Gitzoni, you're on mute.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, Jackie Sonny.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly.
Your sorry answer.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear.
I bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
As a planning commissioner for the City of Emeryville.
As a planning commissioner for the City of Emeryville.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You all have a good meeting and Charlie, you can demote me at your leisure.
All right, and Commissioners Gitzoni and Dram need to sign the oath that you just administered, right, and send it back to you, correct?
Yes, please.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen. They have a full complement of commissioners. Okay, so next item is the approval of the action minutes from our July twenty second meeting. Are there any corrections or alterations of the minutes from anyone? Okay, seen none. Can I have a motion to approve?
All motion to approve the minutes.
A second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Director Bryant, can you call a role please?
Yes, just let me note that obviously Commissioners Dram and Gitzoni will need to abstain because they were not commissioners at the last meeting and I believe Commissioner Zepco was absent from the last meeting, so she will also need to abstain. So on the motion by Commissioner, yes.
Sorry, can I correct that slightly? The the people often think that you can't participate in approving minutes if you weren't there. But for a variety of reasons, like, you know, councils change and like you have a majority change at a time. There theoretically could be times when you could never approve the minutes. And so what the actual rule is that you just have to have somebody basically vouch for the minutes for you in order to approve them yourself. So the commissioners who are either absent or not members of the commission at that time could ask the other commissioners who were there if it, you know, accurately represents the record. And then rely on that for voting on it themselves. But they can also abstain if they just don't feel comfortable. I just want to point that out because otherwise you'd get in a potentially get in a circumstance where you can't approve the minutes depending on shifting, you know, membership.
We have had that situation before, yes. Well, I guess I would then say it's up to those commissioners I just mentioned whether they wish to abstain or not, but we do, assuming the rest vote to approve, we do have enough members to approve the minutes. So.
Commissioner Mendez, do you have a question?
Charlie, yes, I do have a question. Actually, now that Alexandra brought that up, I had to recuse myself from one of the items. Last meeting, so am I still able to approve them?
We've never had the city attorney opine that you could not participate in approval of the minutes, even if you were recused on items on the agenda. Is that correct, Alexandra?
Correct. The minute should indicate that you recused yourself and so they would be accurate as to that.
Yes, they do. They do say that. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, on the motion by Commissioner Simons and seconded by Vice Chair Mendez, Commissioner Chafe.
Hi.
Commissioner Simons.
Hi.
I'm sorry, I'm saying this out of order. Commissioner Dram. Commissioner Dram. I I assume you're. Commissioner Gitzoni.
Hi.
All right, Commissioner Zepco.
Hi.
Vice Chair Mendez.
Hi.
And Chair Keller.
Hi.
So we have six eyes and one abstention. The minutes are approved. Thank you.
Thank you. And now if we can have your director's report, please.
Certainly.
Oh, Charlie, Charlie, did we forget to do the COVID statement at the end of the meeting?
Oh, we did. Oh, my goodness.
Would you mind doing that for us?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I totally forgot about that.
Yeah, I did too, actually, and I forgot to print it out. So I'm gonna have to just look it up real quick here. Sorry about that. Let's see. All right, I would like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers. Provided for under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID nineteen state of emergency. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being live streamed online and on ETV channel twenty seven and provide comment by submitting an online speaker form. Which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment for form can be accessed by going to our main City of Emeryville website at www dot emeryville dot org. And then navigating to the planning commission page. Once there you will see a link entitled submit an online speaker card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting. Using the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call in information was provided on the posted agenda and there is a link on the planning commission agenda page as well.
All right, thank you very much. Now we can go on to your report.
Actually. Did we do public comment?
Oh, no, we didn't open it to items on the agenda. That's true.
Wait, they know, I mean, I mean, the general public comment.
Right, the one before any items on the agenda.
Yeah, that was. That was item four.
Yeah, we'll do that now. So now is the time for a public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on items not on this evening's agenda may do so now. And they'll have three minutes to speak. You can either submit an online speaker card or use the raise your hand feature and the director will call on you. We have any indications?
Let me see here. I do not see any hands raised among the attendees. This is for general comments, not on any specific agenda item.
Correct.
I do not have any online speaker cards related to general comments.
Very good. Okay, now we'll move on three times as a charm. We'll move on to your report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This will be fairly brief tonight. As you may know, the city council does not meet in August, so there have been no city council meetings since your last planning commission on July twenty second. Just a reminder that the council has modified their schedule of regular meetings. So the next regular city council meeting is going to be on Monday, September thirteenth, starting at five thirty PM. That will be the only meeting in September. And then they will go back to their normal schedule in October. So the next meeting after that will be October fifth at seven fifteen PM. Also a reminder that there is going to be an election on Tuesday, November second to fill the city council seat that was vacated by the resignation of Christian Pats. There are two candidates for that seat. They are Charlotte Danielson Chang and Courtney Welch. If you are registered to vote in Emeryville, you should be receiving information about the upcoming election and those candidates. In other news concerning the art center, as I previously reported, on July sixth, the city council appealed the planning commission's June twenty fourth denial of the proposed modifications to the art center. The council is scheduled to consider the disposition of the appeal at their next meeting on September thirteenth. The council has three options. They can dismiss the appeal and affirm the commission's decision. They can remand the item back to the planning commission for further consideration. Or they can schedule a city council hearing on the appeal. The staff recommendation is for the council to schedule a public hearing on the appeal for October fifth, and that is what we anticipate will happen, but we will let you know if it is something different. Concerning your meetings and the format of your meetings, I know there's probably some confusion about this and I've had a few questions about it. Your next meeting on September twenty third will be on Zoom, so it'll be the same format as this. However, the governor's Brown Act waivers, which allow us to have these Zoom meetings, are scheduled to expire at the end of September. If the waivers are not extended, then the meeting in October is going. And and going forward after that will have to be in person, although some sort of hybrid arrangement may be developed where some people can be present in person and others can be remote. That has yet to be determined. If the waivers are extended, then the October meeting would most likely be by Zoom and for however long that would be going forward. So next month will be the same as this month. After that is unknown for now, but we will certainly let you know what. What happens and what the meeting will be like in October and after October. And finally, I just want to take this opportunity to welcome Commissioners Dram and Gitzoni to the planning commission and say that I and the rest of staff look forward to working with both of you in the future. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Charlie. Are there any questions, Director Bryant? Okay, Charlie, I have one and I'm just kind of wondering when the city council. Appeals our decision, do they have to give a reason or is there a format that lays out what guidelines they use to? I mean, this was a unanimous decision by the planning commission. So I'm wondering, you know, what their reasoning for calling it into, you know, an appeal is.
Well, the planning regulations explicitly say that when the city council, it's technically, it's called a call for review. But the regulations also say that it will be processed the same as an appeal by any other person. And it also explicitly says that no reason needs to be stated for a call for review. And when they called this for review, they did not state a reason.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, so now is the time for the disclosure of expert communications and identification of conflicts of interest. Do we have any with the commission? I can claim myself, I do not have any. Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to this evening's item eight point one, which is a study session on the fifty fifty Shell Mount Life Sciences Tower.
And this is Mira's item.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Chair Keller. I'll just share my screen. Forgive me one second. Are you able to see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, so good evening, Commissioner. I'm Mira Desai, senior planner and project planner for this proposal, which is the first study session for at the fifty eight fifty Shell Mount Way and it's a life science tower. This kind of shows you the building site and the vicinity. It's on, it lies, the site is about a. A one and a half acre site and there's a building of sixty one thousand square foot building on the site. The building was built in nineteen seventy nine as an office building and was used as an as such till around twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So it's currently not being used. This kind of shows the different users around the site. As you can see, there's lazy boy across the street, a kitty corner to that is the Wales Fargo or the former Oni site. And I will note that the fifty eight ninety Christie Avenue is a city owned property. So this is the ground floor site plan. So what we are looking at is a fourteen story building. Which accommodates around three hundred and seventy eight thousand square feet of life sign, life science uses. On the ground floor, there's an additional ten thousand square feet of medical offices and non research medical labs. In addition to the ten thousand square feet, there is a lobby which faces Christie Avenue and the vehicular. Entry and exit is off Christie Avenue as well. So these kind of shows the ramp going up. And the loading will occur on the ground floor and will be completely enclosed. The other users on the ground floor include some back and back of house users as well as around twenty thousand square feet of lab space. You will note that they they have designated ten feet for a pedestrian bicycle path and I will talk a little bit more about that in my presentation. You will also see that Christie Avenue is is considered a green street and they're showing the sidewalk corridor to be fifty feet in compliance of what a green street or sidewalk width needs to be. And Shell Mount Way is in the pedestrian priority zone where the sidewalk widths are twelve feet and the project shows that as well. These are typical flow plans. The first few floors are used for parking and then the remaining floors are for a lab and office space. This section kind of, this is the east west section through the site and it shows you the fourteen stories. The height technically is two hundred and forty feet. However, since the building will have a continuous exterior cladding from the ground till to the mechanical level. It will appear as a two hundred and sixty five feet building. As you can see, there are a few levels of parking which accommodates about four hundred and thirty spaces. On the fifth floor, there is a roof immunity space as well. This kind of is the north south section of the building, showing you different layers for parking as well as the lab uses. This is the building branding. This is a very preliminary stage. I'm going to let the applicant talk more about the kind of building materials that they are anticipating and their thoughts regarding the building design. This kind of shows you the rendering in context of the surrounding built environment. Now, in terms of conformity to the general plan, this is sort of a little complicated, but I'm sure we can get through this. Our general plan envisions the relocation of Shell Mount Way. The existing, this is the existing configuration of Shell Mount Way. The general plan calls for its reconfiguration and moving that to two hundred and fifty feet or north of that. The reason for this was that in two thousand and seven, prior to the adoption of our general plan, a traffic analysis was conducted for the Powell Christie area. Which recommended that Shell Mount Way be relocated about two hundred and fifty feet north of its current location. In order to improve circulation in the area, provide simplified access to the property at fifty eight oh one Christie Avenue. Or the former Oni site and create a larger open parcel south of Shell Mount Way. When the general plan was adopted in twenty two thousand and nine, it included this relocation or reconfiguration of Shell Mount Way. During the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, the commission held three study sessions on the site. For a residential proposal and recommended amending the general plan to modify the location of Shell Mount Way such that it is consisting with its existing configuration and its existing location. In March of twenty eighteen, BPAC recommended that the proposed general plan amendment include the east and west pedestrian bicycle path. In the approximate location where the general plan shows the relocated Shell Mount Way. The council concurred with BPAC and gave the direction that this general plan amendment should include the addition of a bike back path along the northern portion of the property with the idea that ten feet. Be provided by the site and ten feet would come from the city owned adjacent property that I indicated earlier in my presentation. Because of this, staff has advised the current applicants to include this general plan amendment and provide the ten feet to accommodate this new bike a bed back. In terms of conformity to the planning regulations, the zoning district of the site is mixed use with residential. And there's an overlay of transit hub. The proposed users are research and development, which are the life sciences, and this is allowed with the conditional use permit. Clinics and medical offices are allowed by right. Mix of uses required. So our planning regulations state that if a parcel size is between one and five acres, a mix of uses is required where one use must be residential. Any deviation from this requirement is permissible if with a use permit, if the following finding can be made. That the applicant has convincingly demonstrated that it is infeasible to develop a project with the mix of users groups on the site. The applicant's rationale for not including residential use is that there is a is a lack of interest from investors for residential use. Due to construction costs, relatively low rents, a concern for future rent controls by the state of California and the site's proximity to railway line. In terms of FAR, the base FAR, the site is three and the bonus FAR is six point oh. They are proposing FAR of six point oh. So that the project will require a hundred bonus points. Regarding height, the base height at the site is eighty five feet and the bonus height is unlimited hundred plus. And they, as I mentioned, the project height is technically two hundred and forty feet and the project will require a hundred points for height. So in terms of what how the bonus points work for non residential projects, the applicant will need to obtain half of the bonus points by paying an additional affordable housing impact fee. And for the hundred bonus, for the fifty bonus points, this is almost double, double of the affordable housing impact fee. And this calculates to approximately three point seven five million if a building permit for this building was issued today. Obviously, at the time, it if in a if and at the time it gets built, the values for the fees would be taken. The remaining fifty bonus points must be earned through provision of community benefits. Applicant has not yet identified how they will obtain that, but has suggested providing additional public open space and public improvements. As I've mentioned, the site is in the transit hub overlay zone, which reduces all required parking by fifty percent. So this calculates to zero to four hundred and seventeen spaces. They are proposing four hundred and thirty one spaces. However, I will note that the applicant's intention was to comply with the maximum permitted parking. And they are providing fourteen more spaces because they didn't because of the calculation, they did not account for fifteen hundred square feet exclusion that is required by our regulations. And they assumed a sixty forty division between office and lab instead of fifty fifty. In terms of bicycle parking, they're required to produce, provide seventy six short term and seventy six long term spaces. And at this time, they are showing a bicycle parking room on the ground floor, but the number of the spaces is not yet indicated and short term bike parking has also not been indicated at this early stage. Open space for a project of of a non commercial nature, what they're required is about nineteen thousand four hundred square feet. Of which a minimum needs to be three, three thousand eight hundred feet of popos, which stand for privately owned public open spaces. They are providing sixteen thousand square feet of immunity space on the fifth floor. And they are showing around four thousand square feet of popos on the ground floor. However, a portion of that is in the public right of way. In order to fulfill their purpose requirement, they need to be entirely on their property. So this would need to be cleaned up. In terms of sidewalk design guidelines, as I mentioned, Shell Mount Way is in the pedestrian priority zone where requirement is twelve foot wide sidewalk and Christie Avenue is a green street. Where fifteen foot sidewalk is needed, the project complies with these requirements. In terms of our comments, we would like to note that one of the reasons the applicant has cited for not include, they stated for not including residential use. In their proposal is Emeryville Design Guideline I thirty three, we states. In general, buildings directly adjacent to a freeway or a railway line should not contain residential users. However, this guideline also includes a list of mitigation measures for buildings with residential uses such as providing appropriate level of sound vibration insulation. Providing landscape buffers using double doors with perimeter weather stripping and providing mechanical ventilation, among other things. We will also note that there are several residential projects near a freeway and a railroad line, including Sherwin Williams Project and sixty seven oh one Shell Mount Street, both which of which are currently under construction. In addition, we feel that the applicant needs at the minimum to provide a feasibility analysis of why a residential project on this side is not possible, including assumptions for rents. And the basis on which they believe that the state of California intends to introduce rent control. We will note that there is a pending two hundred and forty four unit residential project that was proposed in twenty eighteen that the applicant has chosen not to withdraw. And this current non residential project is based on the premise that a residential use on the site is not feasible. In terms of next steps, if the applicant decides to move along with this proposal, they will need to do a community meeting. The project will be reviewed by BPAC. As this includes a general plan amendment, we will also be doing a city council study session. And of course, along the way, we will begin the sequel review. At this point, we don't have enough information in order to determine what kind of sequel document would be prepared for this proposal. But at the very minimum, a transportation analysis will be done. So the issues that need to be considered and by the commission to provide feedback, both to staff and the applicant is regarding the mix of users. Does the commission think that excluding residential use at this location is appropriate? And if so, what kind of documentation would you need in order to make the finding that the applicant has convinced convincingly demonstrated that it is infeasible to develop a project with mix of use groups on the site? It's early, however, as I always ask, if the commission have any suggestions at this time in terms of the type of community benefits that the project would would provide to obtain the bonus points. And of course, does the commission have any comments on the preliminary design concept? So that concludes my presentation. The applicant also has a presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Pretty. Thank you very much, Maru, for your presentation. What I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna call out names as they appear on my screen to see if there are any questions. So Commissioner Simons, any questions?
None for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chafe.
No questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Mendez.
I do have one question or clarifying question, Mira, for the popo space. Is that only on the ground floor or are they proposing access to the roof as well?
No, it's only on the ground floor. The roof, the well, not the roof, but the the upper level immunity is for employees.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you. Commissioner Graham.
I don't have any question. Thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Gitzoni.
No questions here. Thanks.
All righty, and Commissioners. All righty, and Commissioners of Co.
Nothing to add.
All right, thank you. I have just one question, Maru, and it's more or less just maybe a housekeeping or something. But the building has also, the staff report didn't mention it, but there's also the two-story parking structure that's going to be demolished in the project. So should that be mentioned in further documents that there's a building and a parking structure that's?
I will do that. Yes, absolutely. I will do that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. That's the only question I had. So if the developer would like to come forward with his?
Yes, I'm going to, I'm going to need to promote them from attendance analysts. Miru, can you remind me again who it is that I'm promoting?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I had that email, but I.
So you're going to be providing upgrading Michael Kel, Mike Lee?
Okay, hang on a second. Okay.
Ryan.
Ryan. Ryan Sadowee, yeah, I see. Okay, got it. Anybody else?
I believe that is it. Mike, is there anybody else that needs to be promoted from your team?
We also have joining us tonight Jay Longo from SCB. As well as Peter Martin. And Russell Brenner.
Okay. They should all be there now. Yes, okay. So whoever is going to make the presentation or whoever has the PowerPoint can share your screen.
And Michael, you want to bring that up?
Yep, that'll be me. All right.
Excellent. So I'll start us off. Hello, my name is Ryan Sadowee. I'm with CA Ventures, the developer on the project. Very excited to be here. Thank you, Maru, for that presentation. Very clearly defines what we're trying to do here. And thank you commissioners for taking the time with us today. You want to go to the first slide here? I just want to give you a quick overview of who CA Ventures is. You know, we're a global developer that focuses on student housing, senior living, multifamily, industrial, office, medical office, and of course, life sciences is why we're here today. Impressive track record over the years, both domestically and globally. I'm going to go to the next slide. The main focus of this is really just to show this is really the team that we're going to be working with. We have Russell Brenner, who's on the call. He is the president of the Life Sciences Vertical. We have Peter Martin, who's the CFO. I am myself here. I'll be handling the development front end. And Mike Lee, who is handling our investment side. Jay and Michael are architects and they'll be able to introduce themselves as well. You might go to the next slide here. This is really just showing the projects we've done across the country and our access to resources in partners, both capital and institutional. And really just shows kind of the breadth of a project of this scale is really important to have those resources to be able to execute on something like this. You want to go to the next slide? And then really just want to comment quickly on our focus in the Bay Area. Currently, we're delivering here in a few months, the first residence is in Berkeley. There's a two-phase project. The second phase will be delivering next year. And then there is another one down the street as well. Really excited about that and always happy to be working in the Bay Area as a former resident. I love to get there a lot. So talking more specifically about the life sciences vertical, Peter, you want to give a few comments on this next slide?
Thank you, Ryan. I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. I'm Peter Martin, the CFO of CA Health and Science Trust. I come from a native San Franciscan family, actually live north on Highway 80, right near this, near this project. And I've had 23 members of my family graduate from Cal. And if, as you can tell, I've had a front row seat to the evolution of the Emeryville community over the last 50-plus years. On the behalf of our board and our rest of our executive team, Russell, I want to thank you for your time tonight. CA Health and Science Trust is a healthcare REIT sponsored by CA Ventures to be a long-term owner of the highest quality life science and MOB assets in high-growth US markets. We intend to take ownership of this property. And our mission as a company is to provide our tenants with modern purpose-built facilities to lower the US healthcare system cost curve while improving patient outcomes. We're well-capitalized and very committed to communities we operate. And with that, I'll turn it over to our architect, Michael.
Thank you, Peter. Good evening. My name is Mike Kail and I'm an architect with Solomon Cordwell Benz. And we are a nationwide architecture firm with four offices, including here in San Francisco. This project will be our first opportunity to work in Emeryville. And we're very excited for the chance to collaborate with the city on a great addition to the urban fabric and the skyline. SCB has a lot of experience with office and laboratory projects around the country. This first on the screen being a previous collaboration with CA Ventures. These examples I'm showing you now just reflect, design solutions are varied and tailored to characteristics of each individual site. We also have significant experience with high rises in the Bay Area, including many successful projects in both San Francisco and Oakland. As Maru stated, we're just kind of getting started on this site. You know, we're doing our preliminary conceptual studies and we're, we're very excited to sort of dig in and roll up our sleeves with you. We've done some preliminary analysis of the site and had some thoughts about amassing and citing of a potential life sciences building in this location. While the planning code does not officially designate this as a gateway site, as you can see, it certainly has potential to feel like one and be a strong contributor to the course skyline. The site is part of a network of green streets and will be connected to the bicycle path network. And obviously, it's well-served by public transportation with Amtrak very nearby and a great connection to Bart via the Emery Road Round. Environmental conditions are certainly an important factor in any site analysis. And you can see here, we're considering winds off the bay, we're considering the transportation connections, including the cross-town bike path, solar access and potential noise and particulate impact from freeway. And so we started thinking about our initial site enassing goals and the responses that we'd like to propose. So our preliminary goals are, one, position the tower to address Christie Street, respond to the asymmetrical boundaries of the site and minimize any apparent blockiness of the form. We also want to prioritize community benefits on the site, including maximizing the amount of public open space at grade while keeping all options on the table for achieving the total bonus points we need. As Maru mentioned earlier, you know, our numbers aren't quite there yet and we're, and we're working to figure out exactly how that's going to work. And finally, we want to optimize the massing of the tower for environmental factors like wind flow and solar access to the public space that we are going to provide at the ground floor. This rounded form that we're providing or proposing is great for winds. It reduces vortex shedding at the corners and will provide for shelter for the elevated open space on the east side of the site. You can see from this in-progress site plan that we're working on facing both streets with active uses. And as Maru mentioned, tucking all of the parking access, loading and backhouse spaces behind so that they don't have an impact on the open space. You can also see if you have eagle eyes, some, some notes here that show that we're in ongoing coordination with the fire department to address some of their needs. And this view shows the relationship between this proposed project and the variable scales of the surrounding neighborhood. You can see some of the taller buildings sort of highlighted here. And of course, as our tower steps down from west to east, you can see how we're starting to relate to some of the different scale projects as well. This slide shows obviously a wide variety of facade concepts that we're contemplating. We don't really have anything zeroed in yet, but we'd love some feedback from the commission about sort of the look and feel of this. And how we can, we can work together to optimize that. And then as Maru mentioned, we have a couple of massing views. We call these non-renderings. They're really about massing and we're not necessarily proposing, you know, facade skin details yet. But we are assuming that the tower will have a curtain wall type of facade system and that the parking garage will have some kind of a graphic ventilated system that will provide for natural light and ventilation within the garage, but also a pleasing aesthetic on the exterior. And of course, Maru gave the punch and showed you some of these views already. But we had a few more. These are from the freeway, looking north and looking south. And then, again, I'll repeat the section that Maru shared earlier that just explains the relationship between Christie Avenue, the tower, the terrace on the east side and the property line to the east. And so we would love to answer questions. Thank you so much for taking the time to hear our presentation. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for your presentation. Right now would be the time for commissioner questions of the applicant. Again, I'll just run through the list and see if we have any questions, Commissioners of Co.
Thank you for the presentation. I have nothing further.
Thank you. And Commissioner Mendez.
I just have a question. What kind of labs are you anticipating are going to be going into these buildings? Are they going to be chemistry labs, biology labs? Have you gone that far to think of that?
Jay, do you want to answer that one?
Sure thing. Again, hello, everyone. I'm Jay Longo from SCB. So there's a variety of tenants in the San Francisco market in the life science market. And life sciences is kind of a big bucket. It extends everything to biomedical research. Those are chemistry labs, more like pharmaceutical corporate labs. That represents about 30, 35% of all the labs in the Bay Area. And then there are simulation labs, which are more computer-focused labs where they're actually doing a lot of genome kind of simulations. There's genetic testing labs that are more medical, less chemical. But our, our planning for the building would would include more chemical labs for the planning part of the building in order to accommodate the heavier user tenants in the building. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
And that was it for me.
Okay, great. Thanks, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you for presentation. It was very nice presentation. I have a couple of questions. And one of the things is, how do you see the project toward the livability of the area and how you want to make it more cohesive? I see this is like more workspace and less leave. I just wanted to see how you want to work on that side.
Yeah, so your question is the, the connection to the neighborhood. So as in one of Michael's slides there, he was showing kind of how that green space is going to have interactions with the community as well as the bike path on the north end side. We are not proposing residential in this development just because life sciences is such a specialized use. The inefficiencies of having residential in the same tower is just incredibly difficult and inefficient to build that way. So there wouldn't be a residential component in this development.
Thank you. Thank you. And the other question is, what do you think about the innovation side? Because what we see in mass form, simply as a box that are half standard, how do you come up with some innovation in this project?
Yeah, I think one of the important things that we're doing here is really trying to be collaborative. We don't want to go down the road too far and tell you this is what we're getting. This is why we kind of want to work with the community and kind of understand a lot of those before we kind of tell you what you want instead of asking first. So this is kind of really asking first and making sure we understand that. And that's how we kind of collaborate on that aspect. You know, that's why we brought in SCB, who has worked on these type of projects across the country and has some really great ideas to bring to the table. So really early on step right now. But we certainly, we certainly have some ideas up our sleeves as we go along here to make this a great project for the neighborhood.
Perfect. That's my two questions for now. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you. And Commissioner Gitzoni.
Extending a little bit from Commissioner Graham's first question. There is no residential use in this, but there is mixed use residential surrounding it. How do you feel this would impact the residential aspect of the surrounding neighborhood and how do you feel you can benefit that?
It's a great question. I really feel that having the diverse mix in the, in the area is going to be helpful. Our ground floor will be important for that, making sure that that interaction and that space is working out well. We have less parking, so there will be a lot of more commuting in the area. So we'll get a lot of that interaction on the street presence that we're really looking for. You know, really, the main, the main aspect of, of this is, is to not try to jam it all into one building and just have the diverse uses, you know, adjacent to each other and to make sure they play off the benefits of each of the uses. Does that help answer?
Yes, I think that does help answer it. Also, along the same lines, how do you think being in a mixed, even if you are doing a use that doesn't have residential aspects in it, how do you feel being in a MUR district should shape the, the look of the building and the architecture so that it fits into something that feels more neighborhoodish for people that are residents?
Yeah, you know, there is kind of a couple of aspects to that and the ground floor is certainly going to be important to have that feel. As far as the structure and the tower goes, we are still incredibly really on, on that one. And, and I think that's really going to be the next steps in the process and really fine tuning that. It will be, it'll be important to make sure kind of the buy-in is, is across the board. We have some ideas with what we can do with the facade. But we just want to make sure before we propose those, that that is in the right context. And, you know, certainly it's, there's, there's a lot of different characteristics to play off of in the neighborhood. We just want to make sure we're pulling the right pieces for that.
Ryan, this, Ryan, could you, could you just very briefly expound for the group on some of the other verticals within the CA family and how we have developed product in many instances, residential or student that fit the environment and frankly, benefit the environment because of how we have crafted and designed them. I think it's relevant to answer this particular question.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, first, first and foremost is the community benefits piece. You know, we've, we've been pioneers in affordable housing in areas that haven't had that. We've also been pioneers as far as public art spaces in districts that don't require it. And how we've been working collaboratively with artists in the region to make sure we kind of bring those, those unique pieces into our developments. We're currently doing that in Berkeley right now. Certainly Berkeley is no slouch as far as their, their program and their, their, their vertical, their, their vehicles in place to, to drive that. But yeah, we really find that the, the real benefit starts to happen with the neighborhood meetings and just really understanding that kind of back and forth communication and how we're going to propose that. And so certainly, the listening part is going to be key here. And then really showing you what we get, what we've come up with, I think it's going to be an exciting, exciting next step.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all the questions I have. And thank you for your presentation, too.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gitzoni. Commissioner Simons.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for the presentation. Sorry, I'm not on video. My camera is not working for some reason. I have a couple of questions about the decision not to propose any housing. So I want to get into. So I want to get into the details here. Is this project not feasible specifically due to AB fourteen eighty-two, which passed in twenty nineteen? Or do you expect additional rent control legislation to pass in the future?
No, not specifically for that. That's more of a sub note. Mike, do you want to talk quickly about just what our pursuits were? So we, we did pursue a residential use of this for two years. And it just, we unfortunately did not get traction on it. And, and Mike Lee, if, if you wouldn't mind kind of
Of course.
I mean, on that a bit.
Absolutely. So we began our involvement in the site back about halfway through twenty eighteen when it was going through the initial kind of planning commission discussions for a residential site. We then looked at it over the course of kind of midway through twenty eighteen, really through the end of twenty twenty. And during the entire exploratory period, we underwrote the deal on a number of different bases, including a number of different redesigns of the site, bringing in alternative architects. And, and we found that there were really two main issues. One was, as you just mentioned, some of the rent controls that went into place, but ultimately overall the rents in this immediate submarket were not really supportive of the higher labor costs and higher material costs that were presenting themselves in the East Bay market. The, the second piece was the fact that the site itself sits within this transportation hub overlay zone. And the transportation hub overlay zone for the residential project would have reduced the parking from one per unit plus point two for guests, for guest use per unit down to point five and point one. Generally, the minimum sort of parking requirement for just about every residential tower or development that we've looked at ever. We've delivered about a little over three thousand units across the country to date. The, the minimum parking requirement per unit is one, is one to one. It's a, it's a unit to parking space parity with the sweet spot really being in that one point two to one point three range. We presented this to the planning commission or this issue to the planning commission, I, I believe, back in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. And I apologize, that was a different group within C A. But ultimately, the, the desire to add additional parking on site was inconclusive from the planning commission and, and really kind of was a stalemate point as far as I could tell from talking with other members of the C A group internally, as well as reviewing the previous minutes of the planning commission. The flip side to that coin as well is in the event that the additional parking would have been granted, that would have only served to also increase the overall build costs of the project. As a result, kind of further compounding that issue that I mentioned first, which was the, the kind of trade off between rents that were achievable and the overall build costs of a project at this site. So over the course of this, this two-year period, as we were sort of exploring that residential project, we, we took this project to a number of our, our equity capital partners, as well as a number of our lending partners. And the, those were the two main reasons why there was very little appetite over the course of two and a half years almost of exploration and ultimately led us to, to stop pursuing a residential project on site at the end of twenty twenty. And to conclude that a residential use on site for this specific site, given its location, it falling within the transportation overlay zone and the asymmetrical nature of the site was ultimately infeasible from a residential perspective.
And, and I'll add on that as, as we were looking at this use and still trying to look at a potential mixed use. Really, the life sciences piece is such a unique building type. You know, the, the requirements for that in the mechanical and the structure are such that it, it really makes it difficult to have those because they're, they're completely different than you would do in a residential tower. So you kind of have these two. As far as building components go, they just really don't mesh together well as, as well. And as far as the vertical circulation and, and just the incredible inefficiencies that you would get if you try to put them in the same tower here. And, and as Mike mentioned, our site is incredibly unique shaped with, with some very, very challenging constraints that give us that form. So it would only, it would only exacerbate that issue of inefficiencies because of the site. So there's, there's quite a few logical reasons why it just really, it's really not, you know, round peg and square hole. It seems like as we, as we kept trying to explore it. So it's certainly something we did not take lightly and we spent a lot of resources trying to study that and trying to make that piece work. But unfortunately, we were just, it just wasn't making sense for us.
Got it. And thanks so much for all that information there. I guess my, my one other question is, have you had a chance to review the rebuild design guidelines? I know staff and community members have put it together some really great information. So I just hope you'll have a nice walk through our city and take a look at that there because there's great information. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yep. We've talked about those quite a bit. So certainly a lot of ideas brewing from there.
Thank you, Commissioner Chief.
Thank you so much for the presentation and for answering the questions so far. And I have a few others. So there's what's called common open space, I think on the fifth floor. Could you clarify who that will be open to?
At this time, we are just using it as amenity for the building. I haven't really defined that beyond that point.
Okay, so unclear whether it would be open to the public or not.
Yeah, expand on that point just a little bit. It is intended right now to be used as a tenant amenity space. It, it would obviously be a great space for, for the public. However, given the high degree of research that usually is carried on and on life science project sites, there's usually a, a strong level of security that tenants like to see. And sometimes that typically means that public spaces within the buildings are, are viewed unfavorably by the tenants.
Yeah, it's interesting. This is, this is a common theme that we've heard across probably three different life sciences projects that have come before us recently. So thank you for that answer. So that will likely not be open to the public. So and the, the green space on the corner of Christie and Shellmount, I was wondering if you could talk about the decision to locate the bulk of the public open space on the corner of those two streets.
Yeah, really site specific. Michael, if you want to go to that slide, maybe expand on that. Michael Kale. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so the site as, as was discussed, it's, it's kind of asymmetrical. The, the intersection of Christie and Shellmount kind of come together at, at, at an angle that, that is sort of not normal to the rest of the site. So you end up with this kind of wedge of area. Plus, if you, if you can, I'm not sure how big this is on your screen. If you can read here, the, the property line doesn't even follow the, the street. So you end up with this, with this kind of lobe of, of space that is essentially open space that's in the public way. And then technically we have this, this railroad easement, which is essentially defunct, but is still on the books and we're working to figure out what to do about that. But what it does is it forces us to sort of push the building back away from the street. And then it, it provides us the opportunity to take open space that's on the site and combine it with this, this extra lobe and have, even though it's off-site and might not count for X, Y, Z, it still will feel potentially like a larger open space. And so you get a little bit more bang for your buck, we thought, by, by combining those together.
Interesting. Thank you. And has, I know it's early days, but has there been any thought about the type of use for that open space area?
Yeah, too soon, I would say for that.
Okay, great. I had a question about your twenty eighteen application that was residential. So we heard in the staff report today that that hasn't been withdrawn. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about why that is.
I did catch that too. I, I guess, I, we just didn't officially do it, but certainly the pursuit is no longer in play.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I kind of noticed that too. I, I didn't pick up on that. I'm not sure if we have to officially withdraw it or how that works.
Thank you. Okay. And then there were some comments in the staff report responding to your, your rationale for not using residential in the mixed use, mixed use residential zone. And one part was around proximity to a railway line that makes residential use infeasible at this site. And I just wanted to get your reaction to the staff's comments on that point.
So you're referring to the, because of the, like the comment about the residential proximity, I guess it's, it's the walking distance to the light rail. Is that the, is that the comment?
So I think, I think what I read in the staff report was that it says the applicant's rationale for not including residential use in the project is outlined on sheet one. In summary, the applicant states that a lack of interest from investors for residential use due to construction costs, relatively low rents, concern for future rent controls by state of California, and then proximity to a railway line make a residential use infeasible at this site. So what I heard the staff say is that there have been a number of residential projects built with same proximity to the railway line or maybe even closer. And so I was wondering if you had any comments or follow up to the staff comments on that part of your rationale.
Yeah, so
If you don't mind, I can, I can
Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
Sorry. Yes. So, um, we, we, we have read the design guidelines as, as that statement clearly said and, and we're, we, we made that statement not as, as the sole reason why you wouldn't put residential on the site, but as one of a whole bunch of reasons as we stated on this call and have been discussed and in the diagrams in the planning code, the, the sort of the, the zone of influence of, of the railway line, sort of in that diagram, cuts right through the middle of the site and shows, you know, this as, as sort of being an area that is less suited to residential. Obviously, there are ways to mitigate that. And you can see there, there are some residential projects that, that are close to the site. So it, it wasn't the only factor, but it was one of several factors that we were considering.
Okay, thank you. And then I think my last question for now is, I, I heard mentioned in the responses you gave to earlier questions about increasing the number of commuters and making sure that people are using transit and other forms of transportation. I also noticed that you were, including in this iteration of the project, the maximum number of proposed or allowed parking spaces. And I was hoping you could walk us a bit through your rationale for that number of parking spaces.
Yeah, certainly. So that really the, the calculation, like most, most tenants, they, they prefer more parking. So really it's just kind of working with staff guidelines on that. This is greatly reduced from what we would typically see on a medical office building. But, you know, we're willing to understand that's the direction Emoryville like to go in. And so we are trying to accommodate that as best we can, but still making this project feasible. So it really is kind of working within that. Most, in most cases, though, we would prefer to have more parking, but understanding the, the long-term goals for Emoryville here, we, we reduce that significantly.
Thank you.
I already thank you, Commissioner Chief. Commissioner Mendez.
I believe I already made, asked my questions, but actually I do have one more question since you came back to me. So the project is, is basically a single use project and the site is for mixed use. Have you thought of having some other like retail on the ground floor that's not clinics or anything that have to do with the laboratories?
Yeah, so that one's kind of fluid. Go ahead, Mike.
Nope, you've got it, Ryan.
Yeah, yeah, but that certainly a lot of this is going to be tenant based on what they, the goals will be there. Certainly, we wouldn't restrict any more creative ideas for that space. It's just kind of the, the label it is for now, but certainly always like to get creative on that ground floor, for sure.
I think to, to expand on that, I think the, the focal point for us with that ground floor space is to make sure it is complimentary, not only to the tenants within the building and providing a potential service for tenants in the building, but also one for surrounding residents and other, you know, other members of the workforce in the immediately surrounding area. So whether that's a retail frontage of some sort, or if it's a, an actual kind of outpatient or therapy clinic or some other kind of medical or healthcare related use that benefits the, the community. I think it's, it's still early state, early days, but that's just the initial kind of thought process that we've had.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Subco, did I give you an opportunity?
You didn't, but I have nothing further to add.
Okay, very good. So I hate to keep dragging this long and I'm probably going to touch on things that have been already touched on, but I'd like to get some more clarity on it. So first of all, as I've not heard of any low market rate rents in the greater Bay area, can you please provide detail of what you base your conclusion on relatively low rates for rentals in the East Bay?
I don't have those immediately off the top of my head, but we can definitely work with the project team from the point in time to, to come together with you and provide evidence of the, the rents that we were looking to achieve on site versus the construction cost that we were, that we were being quoted and, and underwriting and why those, those were not quite working from a capital standpoint.
And the materials costs you're referring to, how recent are those? Because as we know, the materials spiked right after COVID and as late they've been falling dramatically. So are you using like months, months old data or weeks old data for the construction?
I would not say that. So lumber has come down. This wouldn't be a lumber project, but metals have certainly spiked quite a bit across the country and we are having credible challenges with that right now and, and all, all locations.
Okay.
And, sorry, and also tax pipe, other, other ones. Lumber was kind of the big news. But certainly the other ones have kind of followed suit at, at this point. So there's quite a few challenges. We're not out of the woods yet on, on that material cost.
Yeah, okay. I feel we're heading in that direction, but only time will tell. No one has a crystal ball. So anyway, so what is your basis for assuming that California will enact rent controls? Are you aware of any pending legislation action?
No, we're not aware of any pending legislation. I think that was probably misrepresented in our, in our writing, write-up. It was more around the fact of the controls that went into place previously and the impact that's had on the capital markets and just from conversations we've had with other equity partners and lenders around the direction that, that rent controls are currently going in, in California and the potential for future, but we don't know of any others at the moment. I guess, as Peter Martin mentioned previously, we, we like to look at long-term holds for a lot of the projects that we, we do develop.
Certainly. Okay, so if the project moves forward without any housing, is, is, are you as the owner developer ready and willing to pay the three and three quarter million dollars into our affordable housing fund?
I believe we absolutely are, yes.
Okay. And in, in the narrative you state, however, we quickly discovered that the movie residential units, some tower of life science occupiers do not create efficient use and design for either occupants. So you've kind of touched on that, but I really like to hear some details on it because we've had a proposal off of San Pablo Avenue where they do want to do biotech and nine condominium units. So it doesn't seem like everybody shares your opinion that it's not efficient or doable. So can you elaborate on what makes it inefficient and makes the design not compatible or doable?
Absolutely. So the, the big portion is just the need for the, the, the mechanical system. So a lot of those mechanical systems are running vertically throughout the structure. And so what you would have in a residential, you have your depth of floor plate would be completely different. And so you, you would be less shallow. And so your core would essentially take up so much more than it typically would if it was just a standalone residential tower. So you, you'd have all these vertical M E P systems going up and down. Same things with elevators and other vertical circulation really just takes a huge chunk out of your floor print. Because really the, the mechanical system that you'd use for residential tower, this is what you use for life science are completely different in size and how they operate and how they work. So then you would also have to split the systems. So now you have two mechanical systems for the same tower, further making it more inefficient in that regard. The other part too is also structure. You know, the, the loading that is required for life The other part too is also structure, you know, that the loading that is required for life sciences would be completely overkill for a residential tower. So again, you're you're just really kind of cramming a use in that really doesn't fit the 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 kind of efficient way to build a structure.
Okay, so say on the ground floor where you have the other use that's not lab use that might be for medical, you can't see putting in residential along that area that would be not necessarily requiring a lift, maybe their townhouses or something like that. You don't see that as usable where you went eat a system that could be independent and itself almost like a separate building.
Yeah, we we did study that. I guess the the operational side to that, having just that small component of it of the entire building. It would be so lopsided that it wouldn't be from that operational standpoint, because you'd have to have leasing and and that sort of staffing as well, like you would for a much larger project. So it really just is the scale of it. So if you're looking at it, it'd be, you know, 95% of your building then would be life sciences and only 5%. And that really doesn't make it for a good mix as far as how you would really try to calculate it there. Then it would just be kind of an add on where where the kind of continuity of uses here as as a retail is is more common for for the ground floor.
Okay, that's all my questions for now. If no other commissioner has any further questions, we'll move on to the public comment section. Does anyone have any further questions? Okay, Charlie, why don't you go ahead with the public comments section? We have to read the script again?
Yes, would you like me to do that?
Would you please? Thank you.
Sure. Now is the time for the public comment on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have begun submission of your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the Planning Commission Secretary to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine and the secretary will call on you at the appropriate time. At this time, the secretary has asked whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments. I will note that I have received two online comment cards. And they were from Rod Rod Henme and Lisa Findley. I see that both of them are in the attendee list. So I would say they would have the option of either commenting themselves verbally, or I can read their comment cards. But neither of them or anybody else has raised their hands to comment. So I would say if if they wish to comment verbally, they should raise their hands. Otherwise, I will read the comment cards.
I agree with that. Do I have attendees wish to make comments themselves? If so, please raise your hand. It's at the bottom of the toolbar.
I'm not seeing any raised hands among the.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and read the comments for us?
I will do that. Again, to note, they are limited to three minutes. Some of these are a little bit lengthy, so I will time myself as I read them. And if I come to three minutes, I will stop myself. First one is from Rod Henme. And he says, I am a resident of Christie Avenue Commons, which is located just north of the project on the other side of the street. We will be severely impacted by this project and therefore have the following concerns. One, traffic at the Christie Powell Schumont Way is already problematic and this project will exacerbate issues. Applicants should be required to do traffic study and propose mitigation measures before next hearing. Two, parking is proposed at the maximum, which will cause more traffic issues. Applicants should be required to do TDM study and reduce parking to perhaps 50% of or less of maximum allowable use of shuttle and other TDM measures will make this workable. The project can save significant money, reduce height and can advertise itself as a green project to potential tenants. Three, mapping is problematic since Christie has a five or six story street wall. The PPP tower is set well back from the street. The applicant should study placing the tower to the east of the site, so the lower mass provides a transition to Christie. Wind can be mitigated through tall glass screens. Views to the bay will be spectacular and can be a marketing point. This building is too tall and should be reduced in height. For residential nonfeasibility argument that it is too close to tracks is bogus. Already several Emeryville new projects have been built and are successful much closer to the tracks than this site. The applicant should delete this argument. Secondly, if they sincerely believe that residential is not feasible, then they should be required to withdraw their residential application. For public benefits, potential benefits should include traffic mitigation through measures such as timing signals, possible changes to street traffic patterns, islands, etc. Applicants should be required to promise to incorporate costs for these measures into the project. And that is the end of that comment. And I will now read Ms. Findley's comment. Okay. As an immediate neighbor to the site, I have numerous concerns I would like to see addressed directly by the commission. Traffic, the Schumont Christie traffic loop is already at capacity. Not only is this congestion unpleasant for residents as well as drivers, it is also dangerous for pedestrians. Adding another 450 plus cars to the existing loop and doing so at the bottleneck where Christie Avenue goes from two lanes to one lane is bad planning. Having cars darting across the center line, either entering or exiting the building will be dangerous and cause backups. A full traffic study needs to be conducted and decisions based on what is good for Emeryville residents, not Emeryville bottom line. Parking, while one incentive to encourage use of public transit and minimize car trips is to limit parking, it is easy to imagine an overflow of cars trying to park along Christie and in the several dedicated parking lots within a block or two of the project site. The city needs to anticipate conflicts over this by creating two hour parking limits for non residential vehicles, residential parking permits and increased sustained parking enforcement. Shadow from Tower, our building, the Christie Avenue Commons, has been here since 1995. The great percentage of the daylighting within each unit is through skylights. Each unit has one short edge with exterior windows. As the shadow study shows, there will be four, three to four months a year when this tower will put our building at our skylights in shadow from eight thirty to eleven thirty every day. Significantly cutting not only our daylight, but also the solar gain we count on in the winter months as part of our passive heating strategy. View in from Tower. It is also likely that some of the upper levels in the tower will provide views through the skylights into some of our units. And conversely expose those units to office lighting at night. This already happens with the titanium building where the lighting from the 24/7 operations on the upper floor spills into unit skylights interrupting sleep. While titanium is too far away to create a real privacy concern, 5050 would not. Microclimate effects as a tower PPP creates a drastic microclimate at its base. Careful wind studies are needed to determine the impact of this building on ground level activities, including the outdoor activities at the public market and the new park along Christie Avenue, urban massing. Why is the project being proposed on this site and not next to the railroad tracks? Along Schumont Street where it is grouped with other taller buildings, the developers point about not building housing near a freeway or railroad track is spurious and frankly laughable. Given the living patterns and continuing development arc in Emeryville. Again, a suburban idea and one that seems particularly Southern Californian. Urban massing even on the current site and given the general plan encouragement of stepping down towards lower buildings. The massing of this proposal is flipped. The low part should be along Christie Avenue and the higher part toward the Hyatt House and the public market. This is friendlier to pedestrians along Christie and helps the drastic size difference between the three stories on the Christie Avenue Commons. Sorry. And other nearby buildings on the project and the comment goes on quite a bit more, but that was three minutes. So I would note that both of these comment cards will be in the public record in their entirety.
Okay, very good, thank you. And no other raised hands or comment cards at this time?
Let me just double check that. I still see no raised hands among the speakers. I mean, among the, excuse me, among the attendees. And I have no additional comment cards in my email.
Okay, thank you. Well, at this time, we will then close the public comment part of the meeting. And we will bring it back to the commission for deliberation and comments. Unlike normal times, I'm going to take some chair liberties at this time. And because there are so many newer commissioners, I'm going to kick it off with the comments. And as usual, I have quite a few, so I'll try to get through them as fast as I can for you all. But first, I want to give thanks all around. I think this is a good project. I don't have a problem with its size and massing. And I know SCV's work as a asset manager at UC Berkeley. I'm familiar with their projects such as Blackwell Hall. I think their architectural work is very good, so I have hopes that they will present a an attractive and good building for Emeryville taking in all considerations such as the wind and things like that. So but first of all, I'd like to address the housing nonfeasibility claim. And I have several bullet points here that according to your assessment, we should conclude that building housing in our areas totally infeasible. That we're not going to be able to build any new housing and that our regional housing needs assessment levels as set forward by the Associated Barrier Association of Bay Area Governments should be tossed out the window. I'm going to state for the record that I don't agree with your assessment. Additionally, I don't agree that there's a threat looming for rent control in California. And I based my opinion on two failed ballot measures most recently in 2020 and another in 2018, Proposition 21 in 2020, lost by almost 60%, as did Proposition 10 in 2018. I think the voters of California have clearly made their position on the subject known. Given that fact and that you don't know of any pending legislation, the clear voice of the voters, I don't agree with this assessment either. If the housing in the East Bay and particularly in Emeryville is infeasible, why is Longfellow's proposing a 14 story dedicated building dedicated to housing at the north end of Christie Avenue? Additionally, a strictly business focused building will exacerbate our jobs housing imbalance. I think that's something that we need to consider very closely. Going on, secondly, I'll address your claim that you can't build as close to the railroad or highway as several people suggested. I find it perplexing and contrary that a developer that first proposed housing on this parcel is now saying it's not feasible. All while maintaining an open applications to to still build housing. And more to the point of the contradiction is that developers says housing is infeasible. Just months after a firm developer, the firm developer Longfellow has proposed the 14 story housing close as close or closer to the freeway and railroads. Furthermore, there is no less than 14 housing developments, either in existing in existence, under construction or in planning that are in the same proximity to the freeway or railroad as this project. Thus, I find your assertion to be false. My third point is about parking. Parking regulations are changing around the country and so do funding and developers' expectations. So must the developer funding and expectations additionally, it's obvious additionally with the obvious effects of climate change that we're now seeing. And transportation being a major contributor to the problem, it's up to municipalities like ours to lead this change. I would suggest that if your funding sources concerned about the reduction of 14 spaces, that you look for a different funding source. Additionally, during one of the housing iterations, I was able to have a one on one conversation with your advising developer and was told that the issue most at hand was the amount of parking allowed at the public market. Apartment complex that was scheduled for parcel A, which is right across the street from you. And they were saying that they were allowed more parking because of their timing of their approvals than you were allowed and that caused an an unfair advantage for leasing and giving tenants. So I think it's possible that that apartment building won't go forward and thus will make this a moot point. My fourth point is directed at a less concrete subject, but at this time, and it's looking at the building, I realize that it's current when that the current rendering is just to show massing at scale. And your narrative status is very preliminary. I'd just like to strongly suggest that if you plan, if your plan is to head in the direction of what we're seeing, that you change course and provide our city with a more attractive and welcoming building. Fifth, the building division comments listed several serious code deficiencies and I would expect those to be fully addressed in your next commission presentation. And lastly, as we clearly directed staff and aware of development on the Emery Station Overland project proposal, I don't believe any space, any outdoor space should be within the public right of way and it shouldn't come from the project itself. But due to the unique nature of this parcel with the railroad rider and stuff, it could be considered, but you're going to really have to make a strong point to why you're using public space to count for your outdoor space when there could be possibility of at least some of that space coming from your property. So that's my quick wrap up. Hopefully you'll find that helpful and I will move on to other commissioners. Commissioner Gazzoni?
Yes, thank you. I I would second a lot of what was just said. And I would also add in that if the primary use, which seems to be bio science for the building is incompatible with the multi use, the multi use residential aspect of it. That kind of makes me wonder whether or not the bio science application is compatible with an M U R designation. And so I think that it would be worthwhile really seeing how it can be integrated with residential use. Or if that isn't done, how the premises can be made to be a real asset to the residents in the nearby community. Because this is a long term change and just to the north of it, there's a very, very pleasant, very walkable residential area. And over time, that has the potential to expand south down to this area. And to just allow something like this without accommodating what the all can become in the future would be a detriment to that potential development of a of a strong neighborhood and expanding it southward. That's all my comments at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Madiz? Thank you, Chair Keller, and thank you to the presenters for coming forward with this project. I'll be brief with my comments since a lot of them were already mentioned, but I also don't agree that it's not feasible to provide residential units here. As Chair Keller mentioned, that we have several projects that are providing residential units and one specifically that's a mixed use. That's providing labs, residential and possibly even retail. So that's three different types in one in one site. So I would really encourage you to. If if you really don't, if you really strongly believe that it's not feasible, then I think we need to have a lot more concrete documentation than just saying the proximity to the rail lines, because we have a lot of residential I which live in one that's right across the street from from the rail line. And so I I just want you to kind of circle back on that and 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 maybe consider it. And then also considering considering adding maybe a retail, because this whole area here with the proximity to the public market. It's very walkable. And so as Commissioner Gazzoni said, it would be great if that could spill further south. Since that area right there, I don't see it being used by many pedestrians because of the traffic, because of the busyness of the street. So being able to bring more pedestrian life to that area and to that site would be a lot more attractive. And then also on the mass scene, I know it's very preliminary, but I would just encourage you to further push that and consider the pedestrian experience and really bring bring some massing portions down to to the pedestrian experience and to enhance that. And then also just having a traffic study done, because as one of the residents that commented said, that area is a bottleneck. And I can see especially during rush hour, during like an eight o'clock and a five o'clock, it being a really chaotic, trying to get that many, you know, cars coming out of the the parking structure there. So if you can provide us with the traffic study, that would be great and it would help us also further understand the impacts of what this building is going to be. But other than that, I I think I just want to. But other than that, I I think I just want to push the activating the neighborhood and activating the ground floor. And I would really like for you to consider giving as much as you can back to to the neighborhood, whether it being having more open spaces, whether it being having some amenities on the ground floor that give back to the neighborhood. I think that would really elevate this project and make it a lot better. But that's, those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendez. Commissioner Simons.
Chair Chair Keller, if I may, I noticed that one of the representatives of the applicant has raised his hand. I don't know if you want to entertain his, whatever he has.
Well, at this time, I, you know, unless it's really clarifying, I don't know that we really need to hear any answers to these questions. I think a further study session will flush those out in more detail. I don't want to get into a back and forth, since this is just a very early preliminary planning session. We're kind of giving them feedback on what we want to see presented the next time. So.
Sorry, Chair, the technical error.
That's okay. So yeah, just keep that in mind. If you have a clarifying question or needs better direction, that's fine. But what we're giving you is a group of ideas and items that we want you to address in your next study session, because we realize this is the first blush of this, and it's a major change from what we had seen presented before.
I would, I would assume, excuse me, Chair Keller, that the applicant will have a chance to respond at the end of this discussion, right?
Again, again, I don't want a response from everything we brought up. I expect that in the next study session, but they can ask clarifying questions.
Yeah, make sure they got their clear direction.
Exactly. Yeah. Okay, very good. So we're with Commissioner Simons.
Thanks so much, Chair Keller. So like many of my fellow commissioners, I'm concerned that this does not appear, this project does not appear to follow Emeryville's zoning for mixed-use residential. So I'm really interested in hearing a significant more amount of detail from the the applicant in the future at the next study session. I'm also very interested in hearing ideas for more interesting community benefits on the ground floor. Seems to be a large building that goes way up. And I'd love to hear their ideas about creative uses for that space that could be a really great benefit for neighbors and neighborhood, other people who come through Emeryville. So I'm interested in all creative ideas. And I'm also sure that, you know, Charlie and other Emeryville City staff would be happy to introduce this this project proposer to the developer who's proposing a mixed-use project also in our community. They can maybe get some ideas about how they're making it happen. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Where are we? Commissioner Chief? Oh, I'm sorry. Let me go to Commissioner Graham first. He's in in line, and I'll pass him if I don't do it now.
Thank you again for the presentation and more comments. I think as good as as the same Commissioner Mendez mentioned, we have some video on the first floor. If you can study that and see how you can incorporate that. And we've seen many projects in San Francisco, they have some public spaces is indoor for everybody's use. I think we can, if you can have another study on this, see how you can incorporate that would be nice. You mentioned that it's not feasible to have the residential units mix in the building because of the both mechanical and structural issues. I want to know that if it's possible to have a study to have separated vertically instead of horizontally. So if you have another building, maybe they're sharing a wall or somehow, maybe that can be helpful too. The other thing is more about the innovation part. We like to see more more innovation buildings that is more interesting is meshed to 2022, 2021 era. Just like having some exclusion of the some lines. I don't think that's not enough, and we want to see more. So there's more new, I can say. And it can be from the concept, it can be from form, massing. These are all my comments, but thank you so much. It was perfect.
Thank you very much. Now, Commissioner Chief, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair Keller. So I wanted to focus on the guiding question. What kind of documentation would be needed to make the finding that the applicant has convincingly demonstrated it's infeasible to develop a project with a mix of use groups on the site? So I just wanted to reflect back some of what I was hearing today. In the written comments that were provided in the staff report, it was lack of interest from investors per residential use due to construction costs. I think we talked about today. Several people just mentioned this, that it's quickly changing right now, and so that may need to be reevaluated over time. Number two, relatively low rents. There was a talk of submitting analysis to staff of what exactly that looked like in the case of prior projects or applying to this site. Number three, concern for future rent controls by state of California. I didn't really hear any concrete concerns that would bear that one out. For proximity to a railway line, that would make residential use infeasible at the site. I think we've provided some evidence that it can be done with some mitigation and that that's part of the zoning of this area. And then I heard two things today in the comments. The main things that I heard reemphasized were rent and then sitting within a transit hub overlay. And this is kind of a question back to staff. Have there been any recent housing projects in Emeryville within a transit hub overlay? I'm pretty sure the answer is yes. And so I think, you know, the question is, like, how does that impact this site specifically and what? You know, what does that mean for the mix of uses on this site? And so that's, you know, something that I think needs to be further explored. I'm concerned that a few of the things that we would really like to see in a project in this area, such as as much open space and access to the building as possible and ability to mix residential in, as it is a mixed-use residential zoning site, seem to be not possible because of the specific choice of type of building and life sciences. So I agree with the folks who are saying that maybe this is not the best choice of of industry or of use for the building and the site. And then one last thing I wanted to add on transportation. There have been some really good points made. I was really surprised that unless I missed it, there was no mention of AC Transit. This is probably one of the best places to connect to San Francisco. There's buses that go straight across to the city, super easy and and fast. And so I think that needs to be taken into account when thinking about the transit connectivity. Yes, there's Amtrak, Capital Corridor, access to BART through Emeryville around, but AC Transit is another really key way of moving around the city. And I think that needs to be taken into account in things like calculating the number of parking spaces needed. So I will leave my comments there for now. Thank you.
Very good. And Commissioners Zepco.
The thing about going last is that my fellow commissioners have kind of raised all of my concerns for me. Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation.
All right, thank you. So just a couple of comments I want to add on to and not to minimize Commissioner Mendez and and the others asking for ground for retail. I think it's a thing I'm trying to change is more the vernacular that even ground floor doesn't have to be retail. What I like to call it is ground floor active space. And, you know, we all know that retail is very hard these days because of online shopping, et cetera. But there are plenty of other opportunities to create active ground floor space, and there's ways that haven't been created yet. And I think this is the opportunity to provide space for many things. One thing that was proposed during the housing project was to create a space that served coffee in the morning and did music and like a beer garden at night. And so I think if you guys are going to talk us out of residential, this building needs to provide me and everyone else in town here something who don't work in the building. So we don't, we don't need another building that we just walk by and we see other people enjoying the benefits of, such as the upstairs, the fifth or outdoor space that the tenants get to enjoy, and we just get to look in the windows. So if you're going to talk us into, you know, not providing residential, what are you going to provide? Those of us who don't work in the building to make this a a community benefit rather than just a building to look at. And then tagging on to the AC Transit. What we also need to understand is the bus that takes people over from San Francisco or from here to San Francisco can also take employees to this building from San Francisco over to Emeryville as their job, their place to work. So AC Transit is something, and I'm glad Commissioner Chief brought this up, that they are a benefit, that they do also come from San Francisco. So people who live there and work in this building can use that. So a TDM is really important, and I think the traffic study. But Charlie, I'm, and I'm not mistaken, that both of those are required as this project goes further down the road, right? To do traffic study and a TDM.
Yes, yes, we will. Staff will be taking the lead on the transportation study as a part of the environmental analysis of the project, and the TDM plan is required as part of the application.
Perfect. Okay, very good. So I think that is all unless any of my fellow commissioners have anything they'd like to add. And do the project leaders have a kind of an idea and concept of what we're thinking and feeling and what we're liking to see on this?
I'm happy to comment on that. First of all, we really do appreciate everyone's time and the very specific and constructive feedback. We hear you, and and I know that everybody on my team is nodding and texting that we hear you. There is very, there's a lot of refinement that needs to be done from where we are here until our next meeting. And you have our commitment that we will take heed of each of these suggestions and come back with a more even more community-centric focus on how we can activate some of the public spaces. When you talk about the the lower level, the retail or amenity space, Mr. Keller, I am, I I come from a leasing background many, many years ago, and across all of our business lines, we are very much focused on health and wellness for our residents, for our tenants, and for our community partners. We view you and the obviously the the other citizens and the broader community as partners in this. And so one of the first things that we will do, and obviously we'll absolutely address each of the very detailed points that came up throughout this meeting. But one of the first things we will do is circle back with our Director of Health and Wellness, who evaluates and works with the project managers for each of our projects across the country to to figure out what we need and how we can, again, integrate with the community. Is it, we have a strategic partnership with a meditation center? Is it, is it a wellness center? Is it, this, this, this project comes up through our healthcare real estate division, which Peter Martin and I lead, and one of the things that we are, we have the benefit of is looking across the country at our portfolio, tenant relationships, and some of the amazing concepts that they're coming out with that are beneficial to the the residents in a building or the tenants in a building, but also the neighbors. So we can think about urgent care clinics, the set that's appropriate. I hear you when you talk about fitness. We think a lot of fitness and wellness, music, open spaces, so all of which are good suggestions, both Ryan, I think both, I'm thinking Nobi and our ESG department, we want to, we want to definitely get them back involved very much so that typically happens a little bit later in the process, but we hear you loud and clear, and we will commit to do that right away. Thank you.
Great. Very good. Great. I really appreciate that. And just one of the suggestion, I don't give advice, but just one suggestion of hearing. Many of the commissioners really still want to see residential. And I think a number of your arguments against residential, we've kind of illustrated, don't really hold a lot of wires, so to speak. So I would suggest if you come back and still feel that residential is not viable, that you give us concrete reasons for that. And supplying data behind those would be also beneficial. And the items that I feel that we've kind of refuted pretty conclusively, that you drop those reasons that you don't want to visit and come up with really viable concrete reasons. Because because we are seeing, you know, people bringing projects forward that combine biotech and housing. The one on San Pablo is a small building, but they're planning to do nine units. Four of them would be for sale, condos, five would be for apartments. Then we have Landmark, who's building a whole 14-story tower of apartments. So somebody thinks there's a liability of of rents here even to make a steel high-rise building. So with that, in contrast to what you're giving us, is really kind of difficult for us to say, yeah, I see your point. So just come back with with concrete reasons to why you feel that, you know, that isn't going to work, if that's the right you guys go down.
Will do. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time and your interest in Emeryville for sure. And if there are any follow-up questions, Charlie, do you have anything clarifying?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, we will conclude this item and move on to our next item. Again, gentlemen, thank you very much.
If you just give me a minute, I will demote these folks from from the panel.
No problem, because I have to get the agenda, figure out what our next item is.
It's like a lot of them are just leaving on their own.
I'm sure they're done.
I hope I didn't inadvertently demote any planning commissioners.
Two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, we're all here.
And I didn't demote the city attorney. I did that once by mistake.
She is also here.
And where'd Miru go? She's still, I guess she left.
Yeah, she's, isn't this next item yours?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we're going on to item 9.1, money regulation.
Now, I did remote, I did, well, maybe Miru demoted herself. I don't know, but I'm bringing her back.
While you're doing that, I'll read what our next item is. This is a planning regulation amendment to allow cannabis manufacturing with a minor conditional use permit.
Thank you, Chair Keller. This is my item, as you said, and I am going to share my screen. I have a PowerPoint presentation for you. If I can get it to go here. All right. Can you see that? All right.
I do see it.
All right. Thank you. This is a planning regulation amendment to allow cannabis manufacturing with a minor conditional use permit. By way of background, back in April of 2017, the council passed an ordinance that amended the planning regulations to create the cannabis manufacturing use type and requiring a major conditional use permit for it. In September 2020, another ordinance was passed, which expanded the zoning districts in which cannabis manufacturing is allowed. This past June, on June 1st, the council held a study session on obstacles to expansion of the cannabis industry in Emeryville and directed that the planning regulations be amended to allow cannabis manufacturing with a minor conditional use permit as a way of facilitating more growth in the cannabis industry. Since that first ordinance was passed, the Planning Commission has approved four major conditional use permits for cannabis manufacturing, and they are listed here. The Planning Commission approved all four of these use permits unanimously with no changes to the conditions of approval that were related to the use. And since these approvals, staff has received no complaints about any of these facilities. These approvals included a conditions of approval that covered things like activities that are permitted and prohibited, future sub-tenants, i.e. that the use permit can be transferred to future sub-tenants of the site, which is important, especially for an incubator-type facility that may have several cannabis manufacturing tenants. That cannabis consumption is prohibited on the site, specifying the hours of pickup and delivery, specifying that the business must be conducted inside the building and a condition related to odor control. Staff proposes to include these conditions in the planning regulations themselves so that they will automatically attach to any minor conditional use permit for cannabis manufacturing unless they are modified through the approval process. So the proposal is cannabis manufacturing requires a major conditional use permit currently for two reasons. One is that Section 952205 of the planning regulations states that it requires a major conditional use permit from the Planning Commission. So that section would be modified to state that it can be approved with a minor conditional use permit by staff. Secondly, another section of the code list cannabis manufacturing as a so-called use of special concern. And then a third section states that use as a special concern can never be approved with a minor conditional use permit. That section would be modified to state that cannabis manufacturing can be approved with a minor conditional use permit, while all other uses of special concern would still require a major conditional use permit. These are the findings that the planning regulations specify must These are the findings that the planning regulations specify must be made in recommending a an amendment to the planning regulations. Staff feels that these findings can be made and that is detailed in the resolution that is before you. Concerning environmental review, this is not a project under the Public Resources Code and therefore is not subject to CEQA. However, even if it were a project, it would still be exempt from environmental review under the common sense exemption because it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that it would have a significant effect on the environment. The next steps in this are that the planning commission, of course, is having your public hearing on it tonight. The city council hearing is scheduled for October fifth. That would be the first reading of the ordinance to amend the planning regulations. And then it would come back to the council for second reading and final passage on October nineteenth. It would then take effect thirty days later on November eighteenth. So staff recommends adoption of the resolution that approves the plan, the proposed amendment to the planning regulations and that recommends that the city council adopt this amendment. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Very good. Thank you, Director Bryant. Are there any commissioners that have questions and with your video on, you could just raise your hand rather than going through. I myself don't have any questions. I don't see any commissioners, but they're hand raised, a lot of heads shaking, no. So I don't think we have any questions for you. So we can open this up to the public comment and I will ask you to read our script again.
Certainly. Now is the time for public, for the public hearing on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have begun submitting of an online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the planning commission secretary to read your comments into the record. If you are participating tonight in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine and the secretary will call on you at the appropriate time. At this time, I would ask the secretary, that is me, whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised their hand. And Commissioner Keller, just to be crystal clear about this, I would recommend that you explicitly open the public hearing.
Okay, at this point, I explicitly open the public hearing.
Thank you. Well, the only attendee in the list right now is Maggie Mahaffey, Mahaffey, our intrepid administrative assistant. No members of the public are on the call right now.
And you receive no advanced speaker cards?
I am looking to see, I didn't receive any prior to now. And I do not see any in my email. So no.
At this point, we will close the public comment and bring it back to Commissioner for deliberation. And again, it's a pretty simple process. I have no comments other than I support the idea of making this a a much simpler and less costly endeavor for people who want to open businesses in Emeryville. So so Commissioners Zepco, any comments? I'll take that as a no. Commissioner Graham.
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendez.
I have no comments myself either. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chafe.
No comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Gazzoni.
I have no comments. Thanks.
And Commissioner Simons?
Nope.
Very good. So with that, and then can I have a motion on this side on the resolution?
I'll motion to adopt the resolution. I'll second that.
Very good. Thank you. And Director Bryant, come on the roll call, please.
Certainly on the motion by Vice Chairman Mendez and seconded by Commissioner Chafe. Commissioner Chafe.
I.
Commissioner Dram.
Hi.
Commissioner Gazzoni.
Hi.
Commissioner Simons.
Hi.
Commissioner Zepco.
Hi.
Vice Chairman Mendez.
Hi.
And Chair Keller.
Hi.
Seven eyes, the motion passes. We will pass your recommendation on to the city council. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. And our last item is planning commissioner comments. Does anyone have any comments? Commissioner Chafe.
I'd just like to also welcome Commissioner Gazzoni and Commissioner Dram. Very nice to have you both on the commission. Welcome.
You so.
Thank you. And seeing the others, I will also welcome you guys and it's really good to have a full complement of commissioners once again. And I think we're all ready to do some good work for our city. So barring any further comments or anything, I think we.
I also. I just wanted to also extend the welcome. It's nice to have a full set of commissioners.
Yes, and I look forward to meeting everyone in person. I've only met Commissioner Chafe once at eleven o'clock at night in a parking garage while we watched a bridge be installed, but otherwise I have never met any of you in person. And someday I'm really looking forward, yeah, I'm really looking forward to to being in person someday soon with y'all. With that, I will conclude our meeting at eight twenty six and thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye. Thank you. Bye.